Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to Township of Georgian Bay Committee of the Whole Meeting for Tuesday, December tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. I like to call this mean to order at two fifteen, and I apologize for anybody who was looking at for it an hour and a quarter ago, but our planning committee ran a little long. And so we're now into Committee of the Whole. I'm going to forego the reading of a land acknowledgement statement simply because I did one this morning. I think counsel, I'm going to ask if you have any declarations of pecuniary interest or conflict of interest? I'm getting no indications there are any. So therefore, our first item under, and it no open forum, I presume, because you haven't told me anything, so staff reports, item A is a safe station report from the Fire Emergency Services Department. And Chief Fandam, are you giving that report? Or have you delegated?
No, your worship, I will be speaking to this. So you have a report in front of you that a request come from council to look into the possibility of a save station that to be installed in the Gibson Lake Park area. With that time, we were now that the summer's done, we've had some time to be able to work with that. We've done some preliminary work on it, speaking with, I'm going to say, some different professionals to help advise with this. And you have a report in front of you that talks about some of the costs that would be associated with this save station. And there was also a another option I put in there for counsel that maybe we could entertain that in speaking with the Cottage Association and maybe partnering with them to facilitate and be able to maybe get to the same end goal at the end of it as possible. So yes, I will, I'll speak to that, some of the requests that were part of. The request to do is not possible to do, and most of that is the snakebite venom that needs to be administered by a doctor in a medical facility. We've spoke with the health unit on the EpiPens and all of that kind of stuff. There, there are some recommendations that we don't do it, but there's nothing to stop that we can do some of that. So at this point, the report's in front of you, and I will take any questions.
Thank you very much. Counsel, your reaction or comments with regards to the report? We have to say something because it's been asked that we make suggestions, Councilor Hazelton.
First of all, I think it was a fairly comprehensive report. Thank you, Tony, for doing that. I guess the, one of the observations I have is we're, we're looking at a fairly healthy hefty price tag of fifteen grand per station. And I can see that there would be, if we do this in one area, there's going to be lots of requests for these all over the place. And one of the things that we've, we've heard in the past where communities want things, often the community participation and the funding of these things makes a better win-win situation for the community in their participation, their maintenance, their interests, their support ongoing. And I would certainly encourage as a minimum, a, a community participation as per your option two. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Graziano.
Thank you, worship. As we're aware, we live in a very rural area. Response times can take upwards of ten, sometimes fifteen minutes, depending on where the ambulance buses and who's coming and what level of response has been identified. And the concern that I have is that the, by not having these, we are perhaps missing an opportunity to help save a life. The cost associated with these, to me, is insignificant. At what value do we put on a life? And having one available, especially at major areas where our communities gather, would likely benefit the community as a whole collectively. And to Counselor Hazelton's point, I think, you know, this could be potentially the pilot with future expansion there. I also echo Counselor Hazelton's comments with respect to community involvement. I can see in this situation, perhaps, the two associations that share that baseball diamond, specifically the Six Mile Lake Cottages Association, and I'm not speaking on their behalf, but I would envision that they could potentially, you know, support this. I don't know. I, again, I'm not a member, I'm not a part of their board, they'll have to speak for themselves, but I could see the potential for the two associations to at least co-fund half of this, so twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent with the municipality then subsidizing the remaining fifty percent, and the municipality ensuring that the safe stations are maintained. I don't know what that would look like in the wintertime and whether or not the safe stations would be closed in the wintertime and the contents be removed, given that the population drastically decreases and there's likely no one going to be using the baseball diamond when there's about ten feet of snow like there is now. So that'll defer to staff on how they wish to maintain it during, you know, off-seasons. But again, I think ultimately, these are important, and it saves lives, and that's just the way I see it. It's going to potentially save a life, and fifteen thousand dollars or seven thousand dollars if we split the cost is well worth that life being saved. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jarvis.
Yeah, no, standing comments made by Councilor Graziano, which are legitimate. What is the price of a life? However, I note that within the report itself, it talks about the possibility of theft from these stations. It talks about the cost to maintain them, and it talks about the possible liability of maintaining, having responsibility for these stations. I think that it's, it'd be very good for the, any local associations to have their own kits available that they use, and if they want to apply for a grant from this municipality to help finance those kits that they have, I think that makes much more sense. It's big buy-in from them, it leaves somebody in the associations responsible for maintaining those things, and it makes more sense from my perspective. So by all means, get the associations on board, and if they want to apply for a grant to fund them, we'll definitely listen to that. That's, works for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor. I, believe it or not, I happen to concur with quite a bit of what Counselor Jarvis said. I think it would be nice if we could make it happen, help make it happen, I should say. I think there needs to be community involvement. I think there are some liability issues, it'd be nice if the community was the sort of initiator and applying for financial assistance on a fifty-fifty basis. I think that that could be workable. You know, there are risks, and that was also pointed out, the risks associated with not only maintaining it, the equipment, but risk associated with qualified individuals to operate the equipment. So I'm concerned about those issues, but if the community association can make it happen and work with the township, might make some sense. Thank you.
Counselor Predko.
Thank you, and through you, your worship. Yeah, I'm really in agreement with much of what's been said, and I think my main concern is around theft, you know, the, the bulk of the items that are available to be stolen, whether it's the solar panel and batteries, whether it's the EpiPens or the AED, these are all resellable items, that if somebody was malicious, they could destroy the box, take the box, and leave us on the hook without anything. So I think to move forward with this, we would have to have community groups buy in and, and participating in monitoring and helping to maintain them, because if they're not keeping an eye on these boxes, I don't think the staff will be able to keep up with potential incidents that could arise. So if there's somebody local on the ground that is monitoring it, I think that would be a worthy route to go. And I think, again, partnering with the communities through a grant process, if they can fundraise for part of it, and the township helps to fund part of it, I think that's a win-win solution for everybody. But again, still concerned about how we could mitigate the risk for loss through evangelism or silver theft.
Thank you. Counselor Bochek.
Thank you, and through you, Mayor. A lot of great information here, and hopefully the folks up there are listening to all this or can look at the meetings of this meeting. I think it's a great idea, and I'd like to see it, you know, at the Rendezvous Park, I'd like to see it a few more places, but I do have concerns, and I don't think they can be answered today, but if it was the township that endeavored to do this program, the liability would probably lie with the township, and we would have to have some sort of rider, some sort of new insurance policy to cover it. If the cottage associations get involved in financially assisting this and share in it, do they also share in the liability? And this is, you know, I'm not saying whether they should be there or not there, but I want to make sure that the township is not put at risk, or it is only the township that's put at risk. Maybe somebody could enlighten me a bit?
Chief Fandam.
Your worship, I contacted our insurance company and, and asked them about the liability that would be on the township with this, and they came back with a, a list of the things that the township would have to do to ensure due diligence, and that's the inspections, testing it, there's a significant amount of, I'm going to say, it'll be time because of the travel distance for staff to go and do it, which is not part of this report, but I have no issue with providing some more information on the liability piece of it that came in prior to my report, or came in after the fact when my report was already in, so, but there is a significant list of things that we have to do, advertising, putting it on the township website, inspecting it regularly and, and that kind of stuff. So I did contact the insurance. I will also advise counsel that, speaking with Simcoe County, because they have a public access defibrillator program, that they have had two D-Fibs stolen out of parks in the last five years. However, there was a number of times where the D-Fibs were removed from the cabinets, and because they're being monitored, a call went into nine-one-one, and they found the units, I'm going to say, not far from where that, where it was pulled from, laying in the ditch in the bush, that kind of stuff. So they have been, shall I say, tampered with to a certain degree, but there was only two that they didn't find.
Thank you for your comments, Chief Fandam.
Yeah, my, my, my perspective on all this, I mean, not that, not that counselors have spoken specifically to it, but there seems to be a bit of a trend when we have three options in front of us. The one was to go ahead and purchase this unit and set up this one save station. Second one was that we advise community groups and perhaps support them with some sort of grant, and the third one was we accept the information and do nothing. I, I find myself very concerned with the, the liability and the obligations that are going to go with this, because we're not, we're not talking about one station of fifteen thousand dollars, we're talking about a dozen, twenty or more. We're talking about stations that'll be in water access only locations, and we're also talking about stations that will be accessed year-round, station will be accessed half a year. You know, I can't help but wonder how these stations would do in the last couple of weeks when we've had massive amounts of snow, relatively little sun, and, you know, if the temperature gets below a certain level, some of the contents of these stations will be lost. So I really like the idea of making local groups responsible for their units and having them apply to, but I think, you know, having them, giving them an opportunity to apply to us for a grant to help them. It's similar to, we have a program now where if they're, if they're running an event or a day camp or something, we can offer them some grant money, but we're not taking on their liabilities, we're not taking on their management, we're not taking on all that responsibility, because I think the closer you can have that responsibility to home, so to speak, the better. So I find myself, when I look at this report, favoring option two. And it says, counsel direct staff to advise community groups interested. Well, I think we should advise every community group that we're aware of, even though they may not be interested now, just so the community as a whole, the township as a whole, is aware of this program. Now, I know we've already passed our budget, but I mean, this is something that we could consider if we give this back to staff, they might suggest that we fund to the extent of up to a thousand dollars a save station, or whatever amount we come up with. And, and, but that, I find myself very much favoring that, that middle ground where each community would be responsible for their own station, and we know that some communities have already have AEDs available, and, and that we might assist with the, the funding of it. I think that's the most practical and the, in my opinion, the wisest approach to take. Chief Fandam.
Your worship, I just want to, I am aware of two D-Fibs that are out in the community now. One is at a tennis court out on the water area. That unit was used and was part of a save. So I'm aware of that unit, and I know that there's a unit out in the Gloucester Pool, but they are maintained by those organizations that are out there. So that's why it's out there, because then there's constant communication going on with the Cottage Association, and I think there is merit to the concept, but it's, it's the time and, and the effort that's going to be needed by staff to patrol and monitor these units as well. Thank you.
Counselor Graziano.
Thank you, worship. Couple of comments here. I'm going to commence by addressing some concerns with regards to theft. Theft is an inevitable reality, it's a reality, it's a possibility, and, and I ask ourselves how many of us, when faced by the threat of theft, have changed our approach to life? I mean, we all drive cars, and we all know that theft is rampant in cars, but yet we all find it a need to, to have cars, and we all likely have our belonging outside of our cottages, whether they're two hundred and fifty dollar Muskoka cottage chairs, or whether there's a shed that's unlocked that has a whole bunch of water toys in it. Theft is theft, and I can't imagine that some kid who's going to endeavor to go steal an EpiPen will not go for something a little bit more lucrative and, and bring a little bit more value. I mean, any smart criminal would look at the amount of time that they're going to serve and say, I'm going to maximize the, the possibility of, of facing a charge by going after something like a generator that's maybe not locked up, or breaking into a cottage that's unattended. I don't think an EpiPen is going to be really high on the priority of, oh, let's go get it, let's go get it, we got to go get it. So with that said, I don't think that theft is really going to be a major problem. Second to that, this is going to be located on a very highly trafficked roadway. It's on thirty-three, and that sees a lot of traffic going back and forth. You know, in the summertime, especially, that traffic happens around the clock. I can't endeavor to imagine if the two associations were to ask its residents or its members to be vigilant, that that's also going to mitigate theft. So, you know, as, as much as the theft idea is there, and yes, it potentially could cost the municipality, the theft really is, is there regardless of whether it's an EpiPen or our equipment that we leave outside, or other things and other belongings, such as, you know, ROE vehicles and so on. With regards to time to staff, you know, I, I am a little concerned about the fact that we continue to consider time for staff. We have bylaw, we have a dedicated bylaw team, we have a dedicated team of people that can address this, and we continue to grow and scale that team. My question with regards to time for staff is, how much time is it going to take from, for staff to go from, you know, Port Seven Road North to thirty-three? And if I time myself, because I've done it many a times, it's under ten minutes. And so it's ten minutes to rip up the four hundred, maybe another six minutes in to then address the, the station. Sixteen minutes round trip, thirty minutes maximum. I don't think that that's going to be a huge time commitment on, on behalf of staff, it's not going to definitely impact their week, and likely if they're up there issuing tickets or addressing short-term rental complaints or anything along those lines, they can likely check in at the same time. I mean, it would make sense. So, so really, now, if they're up in the area, they can endeavor to time themselves accordingly and take a look at the, the station itself. So time, you know, and, and I want also remind us that we're talking about lives here. And so is the thirty-minute, you know, commitment on behalf of staff to check in on it periodically really an argument for perhaps us not looking at this as a lifesaving, you know, service? In addition to that, I question whether or not if we were to endeavor to engage in two, or option two specifically whereby we give subsidies to the community, whether those community groups, such as our local lake associations, can install these safe kits on municipal lands. The whole intent of this pilot was to ensure that that kit is readily available at a area where there is activities to ensure that if in the event that someone were to suffer a heart attack or some kind of health issue, that the kit is there readily available for them to access. I'm going to assume that the answer to that question is no. If we endeavor to give a subsidy, well, we're going to have to try to find the closest available volunteer then, who will hold on to that, which means that then there's going to be a time where a health issue were to arise, someone would have to know where that kit is located, get into their car, drive to the kit, get the kit contents, return back, and then administer it. So that kind of, in essence, defeats the purpose. So again, I'm going to assume that if we endeavor to give grants, that we will not allow the community groups to install these kits onto our municipal lands, because then we're confronted with the very liability question, which I'm going to address next. Before I do so, I'm going to request a registered vote on this. I think it's prudent that the community sees who supports what. With regards to the liability, you know, I had the opportunity to receive and review the response from our insurance company with regards to an MOU, a snowmobiling MOU recently. And I'll tell you, the laundry list of things that our insurance company gave for a simple MOU was beyond perplexing to me, when a simple indemnity, indemnity, you know, clause or an indemnity agreement would have sufficed. It was a laundry list of things. Let's be honest with each other, insurance companies are going to give you everything under the sun to protect themselves and to ensure that they don't have to pay out. That's all they're caring about. They're not looking after, you know, community members, they're not looking after people, they're just looking after their bottom lines. And at the end of the day, they're going to write a laundry list of things that they want from us, just like they did for snowmobiling MOUs. It's perplexing, and there are other counselors that saw that laundry list as well, and I can't endeavor to imagine that they're not aware of it. Lastly, there was comments with regards to twenty stations. I don't think this report is identifying twenty stations. I think that this is strictly focused on one station as a pilot, to see whether or not this is scalable, after which we can always review in a year's time to determine whether this makes sense to deploy throughout our community. But to make a decision based on twenty stations, I think is, is quite, you know, concerning. I think there's a lot of distortion in that, because ultimately, we're not talking about twenty stations here. We're talking about one, one pilot station, one location right now, let's see what makes sense. So in the end, again, I'm going to reiterate, registered vote, please, and, yeah, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor. Not that again. I find that I'm concerned about the liabilities, I'm concerned about the involvement of our staff, which relates to the liability issue and the cost setting up not just one, but several, are all reasons to work with the community associations. I'm really supporting the position that you stated, Mr. Mayor. I think we need to be very careful and cautious about this, and maybe support our communities, but they should be driving the bus. And if we help financially, great, I, I'd be very much in favor of supporting our communities to the, you know, something like fifty percent of the cost, but, but I don't think we should put ourselves at risk in any other way, and I think we have enough on our plate, so that's, that's my view at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bochek.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to have my hand up, that was a mistake.
You just threw away that opportunity. Question for Chief Fandam. If a community wanted to create a save station in which we, as a township, in one form or another, co-funded, would you have any idea about the, their ability or our willingness to have that station installed on township property?
Through you, your worship. I never looked at it from a cottage association installing it on our property. I looked at it more from the perspective that the Cottage Association would pick a spot where they have control of it, and one of my ideas, and I'm not saying that this is the only idea that's out there, but if they have a boathouse that's readily available with the hydro already there, that's going to cost, the costs are going to drop considerably to be able to have that. A save, a save station that we have to pay to monitor and, and that kind of stuff, that's where the costs really are, like, there's almost thirty-six hundred dollars in monitoring the station. When it's on the boathouse that's, but where one of the members of that community's association is watching that, that's a form of, of monitoring it, that they're going to be able to see it, check it, and that kind of stuff. So that's the, the, the model that I have in, in my head for envision, because that's what's happened from the conversations I've had with the individual from Gloucester Pool who has it, that it's just sitting on the side of their boathouse with an alarm on it, and all the people in, in that area know exactly where it is, and if they need it, they just go and get it. One of the biggest things to do, that if, if this unit is required, one of the first steps is CPR, and, and that's a good practice, is a good CPR is what's going to save it. By the time somebody goes and, and goes and gets that unit, you need to have multiple people, because we need to keep CPR, we got to keep that blood and the oxygen being circulated. That's what's, that's what's the first key to saving somebody, and then that D-Fib being able to have early access and potentially start the heart again, is, is all part of the cycle.
And maybe I'll dare turn this over to our CAO on this, but the reason I brought that up is we, we know that there are a number of cottage associations, for lack of a better term, that are using township property as one of their sites for activities, you know, be it a beach or, or what have you, and therefore, that would probably be one of the more likely spots to create one of these save stations with whatever equipment it may or may not have, but they would be placing it on township property, and I don't know, I think that's something I would like to know about our, call it liability, if we just happen to be the site where the local association placed a save station that we co-funded. CEO Marriott. C O Marriott.
At at first blush, thank you, Mayor Cutia. At first blush, what we could do is enter into a memorandum of memorandum of understanding whereby the township will be held would be indemnified and make that very clear that, yes, your your equipment, your association equipment is on our lands. But whatever happens, it is not, the township is not being held accountable for this.
Mr. Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor. And and while I'm not in the insurance business, I was I am married to somebody that was in it for a long time, commercial insurance. And if the property is under the care, custody and control of an association, they're just like a tenant, basically, and that the insurance is with the tenant. The issue is with the tenant, not with the property owner, so to speak.
Can we get Mr. Cooper to turn his mic on?
My mic is on.
It is on.
Oh, I'm not hearing it on my end. Very difficult.
I'll try and speak it, speak it louder. Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, that's better. Thank you.
Okay, so all I was trying to say, Counselor Bocheck, is that I think that an insurance company would or agent, your agent would tell you that it's in the case that the mayor is raising, would it would fall under the care, custody and control of the tenant, not the owner of the property. I think that covers it more or less, and I think we're okay. We can certainly check, but I I think that's what you'd hear. Thank you.
All right. Right now, I can see no more hands. I can call the the motion. Counselor Graziano asked for a recorded vote. Counselor Graziano, were you thinking of any specific out of the three options that you wanted to record a vote on?
And yeah, it's a good question with respect to which are the three options that I'm seeking a recorded vote. I think that ultimately, we should have a recorded vote across whichever whichever option council endeavors to to proceed proceed with. And so I am not sure how we would do this. My thoughts are based on our conversation today, what I'm hearing, and maybe I'm incorrect, but it sounds as though we would like to somehow have this station co-funded half by the associations and half by the municipality. And and how we how we do so works through a grant with the municipality allowing the the actual station to be located on our our lands or not, or whether it's a grant and having it relocated at some other place. I would say if if we collectively agree that we wish to have our fire chief go back and determine whether or not we could do an MOU as per our C O and then have an indemnification agreement in place with the two local associations to have that station located on our property, or if that's an option here today, to agree now that we would endeavor to engage in that context and then co-fund the kit to the tune of fifty percent. And I would say let's have a registered vote on that. But if it does require further due diligence by way of our fire chief and our C O is not a hundred percent confirmed that is a possibility, then my recommendation is we defer now, let our fire chief return back maybe next month with his findings, and then make a determination on what we are going to do. So that's my thoughts.
So, I mean, this is a committee of the whole meeting. So obviously, whatever we do now is not final, because it takes council approval. But one option we have is to, per the conversation that we've had so far, is simply direct staff to come back with further information. I'm hearing more than not that there seems to be, I'll call it a co-funding approach, that most counselors seem to refer prefer and with the local association, community group, whatever it is, taking on the responsibility and liability. And if that's the case, I'm not sure I should even call a vote, because I think there's no question in my mind that council would like a little bit more information exploring, let me call it option two. So I'm going to suggest that I'm going to read the motion. I'm going to put in option two and ask it to be referred. If councils and Counselor Graziano, so would probably like a recorded vote on this. But I have moved by Counselor Hazelton, second by Counselor Graziano. Be it resolved, the committee of the hall recommend to council that staff be directed to proceed with option two as outlined in Report twenty twenty-four dash two four one, and that this be referred.
Your worship, if I may.
May.
Thank you. I don't require a recorded vote if in the event that we're referring this. But if we are making a decision today, then yes, I'd like a recorded vote on that decision outside of the referral.
Yeah, no, we are or we are making a referral. And of course, even if we made a decision, you understand that it wouldn't be final because it would require council approval.
Understood.
This committee poll. All right, all those in favor of referrals? And I believe I have unanimous vote to refer this item for further information. Thank you. Dark Sky Bylaw Amps Amendment to our bylaw department.
Yes, so thank you, Chair Cortier, members of the committee. So since the implementation of the Dark Sky Bylaw in twenty fifteen, the bylaw department has received multiple concerns. And in twenty twenty-four, we did see a slight increase in complaints that came forward to the department. Currently, the bylaw only has set fines, which were issued through a part one ticket. And it's done through the provincial court system. With this system, we're able to deliver these tickets in person to the property owner for violations. The issue we see with this method, especially now that we have our amp system, is that these bylaws that are not taken over, we have to serve them in person. Sometimes these residents don't live there full-time, and it can be troublesome at times to actually deliver them in person. So with adding the Dark Sky Bylaw under amps, it allows for streamlined enforcement, escalating penalties for repeat offenders, and then also enhanced accountability with our us being able to put any unpaid tickets on the tax system. So staff's recommendation is that these penalties would be first offense three hundred. This is across the board, what it is through the P O A system at this time. I we don't really see a need at this time to increase. Second offense would be double that at six hundred, and then a third offense, if it got to that point, would be nine hundred. So with the proposed changes, we believe as staff, this would be a better enforcement tool to bring properties that are in violation of our Dark Sky Bylaw back into compliance.
Thank you. Counsel, I already see, I already see a bunch of hands here, so I'm going to go Counselors Bocheck, Jarvis and Hazelton.
Thank you, and through you, Mayor, just some questions of clarity. Well, I'll give you an example. I built my house based on the Dark Sky policy that was in place, and my lighting cost me eight thousand dollars. I'm not going to change them because of anything. They were there, and obviously, you could categorize them as legal non-conforming, because it was before this bylaw. And if somebody comes around now and says, oh, you in breach of the dark dark sky policy, I should be able to have the right to say, no, I'm not. I built it under the bylaw that was in place at the day. And then you're going to start escalating the fines up and up and up and up. I see a problem with this.
Thank you for your comments through you, Chair Cortier. There is a portion of the bylaw that speaks to any lights implemented prior to the bylaw in twenty fifteen. The bylaw was then amended or a new bylaw was brought in force in twenty twenty-two. That's the current one in place. It does speak to the fact that any lights that are in contravention to the bylaw installed prior to twenty fifteen, if a complaint is brought forward to the bylaw department, that they needed to be rectified one year from the passing of that bylaw. So the way the bylaw currently reads, yes, we could place an order on the property to have them brought back into compliance. That was passed by council in twenty twenty-two. So it's the wish of the committees for staff to look further at that. That wasn't part of the report or part of the concerns we had at this time, but it can be addressed and brought forward at a different time if if need be.
A supplementary to that, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'm I'm in agreeance with with the philosophy behind this when it comes to waterfront properties. I I fully support the Dark Sky policy because of navigation reasons and the reflection of of light off of the water. But for a lot of the residents that aren't on water, like myself, it's not going to affect anybody. So this is a very broad umbrella that you're putting over the township that I think a lot of people in this township aren't going to appreciate. So my request to you would be, and I don't know how this is done in in our municipality, but make this specific to waterfront properties, because that's where the real danger is in nighttime navigation. My thoughts. Thank you for letting me make a second point.
Thank you. Counselor Jarvis.
I prefer comments just made by Counselor Bocheck. I will bring to his attention the fact that everybody has a right to be able to enjoy their backyard. If somebody's got lights shining on their backyard, I don't think that's fair. Having said that, my question to bylaw is, do we initially provide a warning to anybody that might be in conflict with the bylaw?
Through you, Chair Cortier. Yeah, for any Dark Sky bylaw enforcement, for the most part, we usually speak indirectly with the property owner. We understand that not everyone, you know, understands this bylaw. It's not our most common, like noise or animal control that most people are aware of. No noise past ten, you know, ten P M. Or you can't let your dog run loose. So we usually, and you know, ninety-nine percent of the time, will provide some compliance period, as well as some education so that they can take the time to, you know, understand, maybe they do need to fix their light. The light may be in compliance and just pointed up in the wrong direction, and all it needs to be is twenty forty-five degrees down. So every case may be different, but that education is always our our first standpoint.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Counselor Hazelton.
Thank you, and I think we're heading in the right direction. I'm not seeing any changes in the specifics of the Dark Sky lighting. Is this is just an amps connection? So my recommendation and request is that from a an offensive standpoint, that you do, you you go through a double each time. So you've gone from three to six, six to twelve. I mean, you've got to get the attention of these people somehow. If they're not prepared to do it on the first, they're not prepared to do it on the second, then they need to see some serious financial challenges in the third, and I don't know what what happens after the third.
I I'm a little concerned that we're going to need funding in our next budget to create some sort of imprisonment option. But more serious, don't could you please respond to Counselor Hazelton?
Through you, Chair. So you have taken down your comments here for doubling from three hundred to six hundred and then doubling the six for the third offense. Was your question just for clarification, what happens after that twelve hundred?
Yes.
Yes. So what our option is, is through the way the bylaw is written, we still have the avenue of the provincial federal justice court. So it would basically be our evidence in front of the justice of peace that through our internal lamp system, we've exhausted the fines through our first, second and third offense, and then we would seek further either fines for that or even possibly a court order for this. We've seen that this and other bylaws, even through the part one offense, where the part ones don't get it done. So we summons them to court for a larger broad of fines or orders that the court is able to to give us.
So the the teeth you have in this bylaw, without getting into specifics, you've had complaints in an area of Honey Harbor where the residents don't agree with the resolution. And I don't know if you, if your current bylaw has the teeth to deal with that or not. But when somebody, to Counselor Jarvis's comment, when somebody has got a light shining into their bedroom window twenty-four seven, that's really unacceptable. And over the water, it's a bigger problem than it is anywhere else. So without getting into all of the details, is is it your opinion that your current wording will be able to correct those problems? Or do we need to also come back and revisit the wording in the bylaw?
Through you, Chair. At this time, we do have portions in the bylaw that, as officers, we believe have teeth. So one of the big portions, and we added it to our site alteration bylaw earlier this year in April, is a failure to comply with an order. So through this bylaw, we're able to issue an order to remedy the property within a specified period of time. There's also the penalty process for that specific. So we could get into the portion of light pollution, issue an order. If the order is not complied with, we could go through these three portions. And then, you know, if we've exhausted those options, take it further. But it's not a problem with the wording. It's just the amps allows us to mail tickets, email. It's just a quicker means of enforcement that we can keep internal before we possibly have to take it a step further.
Okay, I look forward to seeing how it pans out. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Pedco.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. Just very quickly, a couple of two questions, and I think it's actually a follow-up to Counselor Hazelton's yesterday account. Do you know how many Dark Sky offense orders do you issue annually right now?
Through the chair, as of right now, for complaints, township has received six this year for Dark Sky enforcement. And off the top of my head of those six, there's been a few orders issued to different properties. A lot of the times, as I spoke to Counselor Jarvis, sometimes people are willing with with his comments earlier, sometimes it's it's just a case of telling someone to angle the light down, or they're not aware. It was a one-time accidental case to which they had the light on, you know, at night, and it was an accidental floodlight that possibly they used to let their dogs out or something.
And then I I guess so, I mean, it's not a huge widespread issue that we have. So it's it's not a a life-altering change that you're making from the provincial system to amps. And then from these six, if you were to try to extrapolate to the future, and you were able to have a different second, third, et cetera, offense level, how many of those six do you think would wind up being multiple offenses?
Through the chair, for a lot of our bylaw cases, when we have the powers of orders that we usually gain compliance, I I think us as bylaw staff, and Karina can speak to this as a supervisor, we do a lot of education with the public, and we're always there, you know, we want to educate individuals. So if it's a case to which they didn't know or possibly orders are issued, we understand that sometimes the calls that come back to us, people can be, you know, quite upset. But we, for the most part, a lot, and speaking to most bylaws, once orders are issued, we usually gain compliance. It's not rare, I would say, but a lot of cases, we're not going down these offenses of multiple, multiple fines to gain compliance. Usually, it's, it it just depends on the case.
Sure, and and these additional fine levels is really a motivating factor that you can use when you're dealing with people.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Counselor Cooper.
Thank you for the report, and I'd like to start with saying that I I think it it is a, even though there's very few infractions, it is a bylaw that is important. And I and I appreciate that really what I'm hearing, I think, is that you're going to use your good judgment and not come down on people that don't deserve to be treated that way, but others that may need to hear some more. I know that there's one example, when when I, if I have to go out at night, and it's pretty rare these days, but if I do, I pass two places that are a problem, one that's continued to be a problem. You probably know about it, but if you don't, I'd be happy to talk to you about it, because it's a navigation hazard and a navigation hazard for very long distances and and also shining into several cottages in their bedrooms and so on. So it's it's a real hassle. I have another place that I go by just before I get home, where they turn the light on on occasion, and it's it's doesn't help with the navigation, and it's annoying, but it's inadvertent, I think. It's it's a situation where the people don't really know what they're doing. I haven't gone over to speak to them, but maybe you will someday. Anyway, that's that's sort of, I'm I'm in favor of of this, and thank you for doing what you're doing.
Counselor Graziano.
Uh, thank you, your worship, and, you know, I I think there's some merit with respect to what Counselor Bocheck had articulated earlier with regards to how this will not, in fact, better the the community that is non-water access or that is not on the waterways. I wonder whether or not we can add a caveat here, given that we're moving or or potentially passing this in that it identifies water access properties and navigational concerns, precluding those that, you know, may not may be on the waterways. You know, again, I think it's just good neighborly expectations that you don't shine a spotlight in your neighbor's, you know, backyard. And that's just common. And I mean, I think it could go both ways, because if they do that to one, then the other side can do it to them. But I I understand the the need for the dark skies. But I understand the, the need for the dark skies. You know, requirement as a water access property resident myself, there have been times where I have been returning home. On the water and bright lights do you blind me, albeit for a portion of my commute. So. So with that said, is there any way that we can differentiate and apply this to navigational applications and, you know, cottages and or properties that are on. Waterways or waterfront and preclude those that are non waterfront properties such as those on hillside, those on. In Oak Bay as well as those on Honey Harbor and perhaps in, in our other areas such as Back Tier as well. Thoughts over to bylaw. Thank you.
Mr. Ronder. Through your chair, at this time with our complaints, we receive complaints both on land and water access. Some are islands, some are attached land with waterfront properties. Or some are actually no waterfront access at all. If it's a case of a light shining through light trespass or light pollution due to a non cutoff fixture into one's house, we've reacted to both. Some have raised navigational concerns. Some are just because it's lighting up one's bedroom at night. If it's the wish of the committee for staff to look at possibly changing the bylaw for water access properties. That's something that staff could look into, but there are complaints that do come in on land and from staff, I would see that many inland. Cottages would have concerns if, if they weren't protected from this bylaw as well.
Thank you. Counselor Bocheck.
Yeah, I would like to see that reconsidered. To give you an example, I'll be the first one to call. For light pollution and for the lights that are shining into my windows from the municipal street light out in front of my house. I mean, we've had to put up shades. And if you want to start, if you want to start going in this direction. I will phone in and give a formal complaint and you can start amping up that fine day by day. Because this is unfair. I can see it for navigational purposes. But you guys are putting lights all over the place, streetlights that don't comply with this. So start writing yourself tickets. I'm a little fed up with this. Whole thing about controlling what everybody does through bylaws in this township. There is freedoms around here and we got to start exercising. Thank you. And you'll be getting my call directly after this call meeting.
Counselor Hazelton.
Yeah, I was intrigued with Counselor Bocheck's comment about not liking the streetlights. And I guess our staff are counting incidents, counting crows maybe. Anyways, I just wanted to relay a story to you. In my lovely city of Newmarket, they decided to put up ultra bright white streetlights, replacing the other ones that. I think were more orangey. And I can tell you that every single neighbor in the community. Who was going to be impacted by that light shining to their bedroom or living window or whatever, were, went ballistic. So this is not a water only. Issue. I agree that Counselor Bocheck's comments probably need to be understood because if the township's putting up lights and they're not respecting your own. Dark sky by, dark sky lighting bylaws, then I don't understand why. I drive, I will have occasionally driven by Buttonville Airport. And they have the highway lights. That are very different from the normal highway lights to deal with the airport constraints. So there are lights out there that would allow us to comply with our own dark sky by, dark sky lighting bylaw. And I think. We should be the, setting the example on that. As we go forward. I'll tell you my little story that when they renovated the street I live on in Berry and the light was shining our bedroom window, I said, what the hell, you're shining our bedroom window, but not on the sidewalk you're trying to light up. They reangled it. Everything's fine. It wasn't the, I didn't even have to file a complaint to bylaw. I just simply said, wait a minute. No, I did not. I gave them a chance. No, I, I, I personally think, in spite of some of Counselor Bocheck's objections, I personally think. This should be applying to everyone because I don't, I don't think your bedroom, I think your bedroom should be safe from your neighbors lighting. Regardless of whether you drive to or boat to or walk to or however you get to your bedroom. That, in my opinion, I think that's just appropriate. It's unfortunate. That we need all these bylaws to. Control the behavior of some. Either insensitive and or selfish individuals. But I also think it's important for us to understand, you know, you may have received half a dozen complaints. But I know of at least a couple of situations where when people were made aware of. The, the, the bylaw, the dark sky bylaw by their neighbors, that was it. They didn't have, they didn't have to file a complaint. The neighbor was informed, your lights shining bother me when I'm boating home or it's bothering me in my bedroom or what have you. And the neighbor changed it. You know, sometimes it's a pain in the butt to make these changes, but often it's. Just re-aiming the light or changing the, or putting a shade over it or something that keeps it on the, most of the light on your property. And so I think that I, I find it interesting that we were, you're coming here simply to change the how. You, that we, that you can get the dark sky bylaw under the AMP system, and yet we start talking more conversation about. The bylaw itself as opposed to whether or not it should be under amps. So I think that. I think you've heard that. It's important and absolutely from a navigation point of, I don't even care if I'm driving my car, some light shining into my eyes, I'm not impressed. But I must say. I've had far more experiences on the water than driving of this. So I think, I think unfortunately, it's an important. Bylaw to have. The motion I have in front of me reads, moved by Counselor Jarvis, seconded by Counselor Predko. Be it resolved that the committee of the whole recommend that council approves the updates to the AMP's bylaw to add penalties to the dark sky bylaw under the administrative monetary penalty system. And that committee of the whole recommends to council to direct staff to bring an amendment to the dark scar, dark sky bylaw for adoption. And you want to say twelve hundred versus nine hundred? So that you may want to incorporate that in what you recommend to council. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. And now we move on to a short term rental year end report.
Point of order quickly. I'm going to recuse myself from the short term rental report in that there is a requested resolution that will come out of this and I have a conflict. So. Given that this is the last matter on the agenda, I'll recuse myself for the conflict. And. There's a solid waste consulting terms reference review. So disregard, I'm going to remove myself now. I'll endeavor to watch this for information purposes outside of it and then I'll chime back in when we discuss the solid waste side of things.
Thank you, Counselor Graziano.
Thank you.
Recorded that conflict. All right. Any other conflicts? Okay. Short term rental bylaw report, year one report. Let's go.
All right. All right. So good afternoon, committee and the mayor. We're here to talk about our short term rental bylaw because we've hit one year of putting it into implementation. So the presentation overview today is just, we're just going to go over what we're going to talk about. So in twenty twenty three in December, council adopted bylaw twenty twenty three dash one sixteen. To regulate short term rental bylaws or short term rentals within the township from this date, bylaw staff in connection with other departments, which is why Cody's here sitting with us. Have been working to register all rent active short term rentals within the township. So this presentation will outline the following. So what steps we have taken thus far, original numbers versus current statistics. Outlying the application process and issues we encountered, complaints that we received and short term rental survey results. So this is just our application where we got from December twenty twenty three. So from December to March, we started with public outreach. We worked with our sustainability department to create posters for all municipal buildings. We did social media posts and updates our road township signs to try and bring attention to the implementation of the bylaw. In April twenty twenty four, we sent out our welcome letters to all active short term rentals that were identified through our software. Indicating that the bylaw had been implemented and that applications were being received and to contact us for further information. So come to June twenty twenty four, we did receive several applications, but we were going to put a bigger push on for the summer months and get everybody registered. So we started sending out letters to all the short term rentals that did not have applications in the queue. And with gave them a thirty day timeline to comply. So come July, we started issuing our first penalties, penalty notices sent to the property owners with active short term rentals listings that had not contacted us or we had not received anything in their applications. Come September, we started issuing second penalties. And now we've started on our third rounds with a very few lingering ones that are outstanding. So this is our active current before we started registering for our short term rentals themselves and the guests that they housed. So prior to the S T R bylaw, there's approximately two hundred and fifty short term rentals in our township. With that, our track, tracking software included approximately eighteen hundred guests that would stay in these rentals at any given time. After one year of going through this implementation of this bylaw, our current numbers show a forty two percent decrease in short term rentals and a fifty one percent. Decrease in total guests that these rentals would house. Staff do expect the short term rentals to rise in the spring as people are going to get geared up for the summer again, but those are our numbers right now. Obviously, this report was submitted a couple of weeks ago, so they are a bit different throughout the report, but very close. So our current statistics, we have about a hundred and forty five short term rentals. I think we're around a hundred and forty. They've dropped a little bit. We've registered a hundred and three. I think we're near a hundred and seven now. We have a couple that are awaiting payment. A few, we've received the applications and we're just working through the bugs. And there's some that are stalled, we would say, and a lot of them end up in our building. We've found building code or septic issues that we have to work through. And obviously with the snow in these time of year, septic's aren't getting put in right now. We have twelve that are non compliant and we have twelve per, twelve that are, we're having a hard time finding their location, but we're working with local residents to identify those properties. When we first started with this, there were a lot of unknown addresses, quite a few weren't even in our township. It's just the way the software pinged them. But we've been able to find a lot of them and that's kind of our winter project is to try and find these outstanding ones. So with our administrative monetary penalty system that we implemented with short term rentals, we have issued sixty two charges. Fourteen of those remain open, so that's people can either challenge them or they're waiting to go to the payment process. We've closed twenty eight of them, which has grossed twelve thousand three hundred and ninety six dollars. And then twenty of those have gone unpaid, which we've put onto taxes, which result in ten thousand dollars B F Bs or fines. Of the fourteen, of the sixty two amps that we issued, fourteen of them requested a screening. So that's their first stage challenging the ticket. Of those fourteen, only two have requested a hearing. So those penalties were issued to forty six different properties. Of those, of those charges, sixty one of these were laid for advertising a short term rental without a registration. And the other charge was laid when an officer's, officers found an unregistered rental operating. So the application process is, this is how it kind of looked for us. So the application is completed, required documentation submitted to township office or by email to bylaw. We reviewed the applications and work with applicants to ensure all the documentation is complete and full and they understand what they're, you know, signing up for. Buildings. So then once we have a full application, we send it over to building for review. They complete a desktop review of the bedrooms and septic size to ensure the information is correct and that there's no outstanding orders or, or open permits. Then we send it on to taxes to make sure they're paid up to date because the bylaw does give us the power to, you know, deny that or not approve it without the taxes being paid and, and any outstanding. Issues under the building code or any other municipal bylaws. So then once we get that all approved, the bylaw department sends out an application for payment. Once payment's received, the registration is issued. So. As much as it looks like a five step process, some of these took us quite a few steps to get to the end of it, but we're working through it for sure with our hosts. Okay, so registration review. So of our hundred and three properties that we registered, we did. Thirty four are regular registrations. So those are twenty two days and more of those. Then we had a regular plus sustainability. So these people chose to do sustainability pledge to make their rental hosts more tourism and sustainability friendly. They worked with our sustainability department to achieve that. So thirty seven of those. Regular properties were, or thirty seven additional properties were sustainability, a sustainability pledge completed. And similar to the light registration and there's sixteen, and then again, the sixteen plus sustainability. So that's kind of a breakdown of that with a total revenue of seventy four thousand nine hundred dollars. Okay, so building statistics, and this is why we have Cody here as well, in case you have more questions about that. So during the application review, as I mentioned, building staff looked over the property application to make sure there's nothing outstanding. He did, there was no outstanding billing from its orders that the bedrooms were listed in the application were appropriate for the installed septic. So this process found the following issues. So of the total applications that were reviewed by building department, there was a hundred and twenty. Of those hundred and twenty, there was thirty two building code issues. So six, six new septic's were required. Five open permits were closed, so a deck permit, dock permit that we didn't want people on unfinished and twenty one other building code violations. Okay, and financial statistics. Statistics. As I mentioned before, if there's any outstanding taxes, we got them paid before we were registering these properties. So these six properties that had outstanding taxes, we were ended to bring in thirty eight thousand three hundred and twenty six dollars and eighty one cents that was owed to the township. And without that push, those taxes likely wouldn't have been paid to the full amount anyways, before we registered those, those properties. Okay, so some common application issues that we saw, the septic inspection, majority of owners had to get a septic inspected and caused extended time during application process. Obviously, we, you know, we knew that when we were going into this process that those owners on the bay would need to, you know, get that truck out there and get those things dealt with. So that did take a little bit of time, but we're hoping in the next year, since a lot of people did it this year, there won't be as many. Our responsible person criteria, a lot of owners, they were having a hard time meeting that one hour response time. So we got them to provide a secondary contact so they could be successful and meet that criteria if they were needed after hours for bylaw concerns. Bunkies. Owners wanted to rent out bunkies, which is prohibited in the bylaw as we wrote it last year. And guest rooms. Applicants did not follow two bed guests per bedroom and had to reduce the number of renters, which we saw in that beginning slide. That's why those numbers reduced so drastically is because people were housing, you know. There was a four bedroom house with eighteen people in it. That's, so we brought those down to eight. So that was like, as much as it was an application issue, I think it's a win for, for the township and the septic's and everything out there as well. Complaints. So we received seven complaints this year, which is up, but the reason I think it was that is because people were aware. That we now had a short term rental bylaws. They wanted to check if they were registered. So three of those complaints were in those natures. Three renters were violating the township bylaws, so like noise, those kind of things. And one was found invalid that it wasn't operating on S T R. So those are the seven complaints there.
So the next slides, I'll walk through a short term rental survey that the bylaw department conducted. So the objective was to gather some feedback from our short term rental owners regarding the bylaw and its associated procedures. So this was to help us bring some information before the committee to give a bit more of an idea as to what some of the rental owners were saying throughout the year. So we started this November sixth with an end date of November fifteenth and the link was sent to all active short term rental owners to the email that they specified on their application. So out of that, we only received twenty seven responses and it was sent to the one hundred and three. Full renters plus any additional new ones that fell after the report kind of threw out. So just to break it down, there is some multiple questions. So the first question was, are you supportive of the township implementing a short term rental bylaw to register, regulate and govern all short term rentals in the township? The answers varied from zero is not supportive and ten is very supportive. As you can see in the results, the average response was two point zero seven. On the not supportive side with majority being zero at thirteen responses. While there were some up there at the eights, nines and tens majority for the people responding were not in support. We asked the question, did you contact the mayor or local council regarding your opinion of the short term rental bylaw? So out of the twenty seven responses, nineteen percent had stated yes. Seventy percent said no, while another eleven percent said that they had spoken another public meeting. Out of all documentation required as part of the registration process, please indicate how easy or difficult each item was to complete. The main reason behind this is we wanted to see. What we were receiving, some of the issues that the township, as Karina mentioned in another slide about sometimes the septic inspection. For the most part, some of them were easy, as you can see through the proof of ownership, proof of insurance and waste disposal plan. While most were neutral with responsible person or septic, site plan, floor plan and sustainability. But none of the averages were within the difficult or very difficult category for this. So this was an open ended question left to each of the respondents. So please specify what we as township could have done throughout this process to have further assisted you. So I gave, through the twenty seven responses, found the three most common themes. So the first theme was no comment to be shared. A lot of people did not provide their comment for this response. The other one was the township was helpful and that the application process was fairly easy. With the last one being that the township should not regulate the short term. With the last one being that the township should not regulate the short term rentals and that it was a tax or money grab. As you can see from that original response with two out of, you know, the average of two out of ten for response for not in support of the bylaw, that's where that theme would have for sure came from. So next, the township received many applications with bunkies included as part of the sleeping area. If the township allowed for this to be classified as a guest room, as long as the primary dwelling was being rented to the same party, would you be in favor? So eighty one percent were in favor, four percent were no, and fifteen percent were no because they did not have a bunkie on their property. Question six. So the township short term rental bylaw requires owners to have their guests complete a renters code of conduct. With the new bylaw on renters code of conduct, did you find more cooperation among your guests during their stay? Fifteen percent did find more cooperation, eleven stated no matters got worse. And while seventy four percent stated that there was no change from the renters that they had year over year. Throughout the year, did you hit your sustainable pledge goals? So forty eight stated yes, eleven percent had stated no as of yet. While forty one percent stated that they did not complete a sustainability pledge. So they would have been within those two categories. And you could see it was almost even from the regular and light that it was almost split fifty fifty between each group that had done them. So would you like to see a graduated rental category where you could commit to another week of rentals for an additional fee? This would be geared towards more the light rental hosts. So thirty percent stated yes, thirty percent stated no. And forty one percent stated that they already rent their cottage for more than twenty two plus days or more, so it would not apply to them. Other will be two more questions or a few more here. So with this bylaw on effect and the decrease in rentals across the province, will you continue renting your Georgia May property in the coming years? Thirty three percent yes, fifteen percent no, and almost half of the respondents stating maybe or unsure for the next year. And there were many phone calls. The bylaw department stated that these people had renters already for the year. So they felt they needed to do it for this year and they'll really decide at once their registration is coming up to expiry if they want to endeavor into it for the twenty five, twenty six year. And as a short term rental owner, what is something about the short term rental program that you would like to see changed? This was another open ended question. Same thing, I took the top three themes that we had seen. The first was to repeal the bylaw and that they do not agree with many of the requirements. One was that the fees were too high and three, which you'll see in a later slide, is people actually wished for us to create a condensed bylaw for renters to review. So what they found is that the people signing the renters code of conduct had reached out to them saying, I don't want to read the animal control bylaw or the noise bylaw. They're looking for just a cheat sheet of one, just so that people are aware of what's common. And that's actually something we're looking to do to help our renters. So that people are aware of the common themes within bylaws and some of them may not specifically apply.
Okay, so through the first year, the township regulated initiative rental bylaws, there's been two common issues that staff have received consistent feedback back about. So I'm gonna dive into them a little bit more. Once the agenda was posted for this meeting, I did send it to all of our registered hosts. They are aware of it and we did see some positive feedback about the discussion items that were being brought forward today to discuss. So this first item was the responsible person response time criteria. So throughout the year of this process, staff received feedback that this one hour limit was too short, whether that's because by the time they get here and get in a boat and get up the bay and they weather it's just not realistic for some properties depending on where they're located. Staff have not needed to contact the responsible person after hours for any bylaw violations thus far. So that's a positive thing, but staff recommend that we increase this response time to two hours, which will include the majority of owners to be responsible people instead of seeking somebody else to assist them with that criteria. So that will hit the GTA area. Most of our owners, there's some that are out of province for sure, but the very, very minimal most are in the on the GTA. So this that time responsible allow them to take full responsibility to their rental and we don't see that being an issue thus far. The second item is sleeping cabins. So a large majority of application came through the bylaw department with a sleeping cabin included. The way that current bylaw reads is that short term rentals are only permitted in the primary dwelling. Many owners raised concerns that they would like to see these legal sleeping cabins be available to renters who enjoy their property. Staff are asking the committee to consider allowing sleeping cabins to be rented in connection with the primary dwelling. So it would be one party has the whole property itself and they would still have to abide by the guest rooms and the amount of people and everything else that goes with it. These cabins would have to be assessed to ensure that the septic is approved and for the amount of bedrooms that is a legal sleeping cabin as per planning and for building specs. So as a part of this application process, staff found and we outlined in our presentation here that there were some significant building concerns with some of our renters or rental hosts properties. So they had to check for those outstanding orders, permits, et cetera. As mentioned previously, billing staff found a considerable amount of issues. Staffs are suggesting that a hundred dollar fee be implemented for building reviews. So this is a common practice in other municipalities surrounding us and will help cover the cost of staff time. This fee would be applicable for any new applications. So our hundred and three that are already in wouldn't have to pay those. Unless we do decide or committee decides council decides to add those sleeping cabins, then we'd have to do a whole reassessment of the property to make sure that cabin is appropriate. So then that fee would be applicable for them.
Number three there on the discussion items is a sustainability overview. While I'm not part of the sustainability department, they did provide the bylaw department with some comments that I'll share with the committee. But I can see that Jennifer Schneier, our director of sustainability is on if the committee does have any further questions for it. So the sustainability pledge within the short term rental registration program has been a notable success. Over fifty percent of hosts joined the sustainability plan and with only eleven percent who were surveyed yet to meet their goals. Many hosts enhance guest engagement by sharing local history and culture. And over seventy percent partnered with local businesses to promote promote artists, retailers and food services. Impressively, more than eighty percent committed to promoting local trails, parks and community activities while also sharing information on local environmental rules. With audits planned for early twenty twenty five, the program has significantly fostered community engagement and environmental stewardship.
All right, we're almost done. As we move forward into our second year, bylaw staff have over seventy percent of active short term rentals registered. Well, we are working on a simplistic renewal form, so it'll just be easier. Then they won't have to reveal their documents. We'll check that's anything's outstanding. So it makes it easier on our hosts. During the renewal process, there may be some owners who will require a new septic inspection, as I mentioned, because a lot of them had to get them, but there were still some that had from twenty two and twenty three. So as that three year criteria comes up, they'll have to meet that. Staff will continue to monitor all active S T Rs in the township and work to go to crease the increase the percentage of registered hosts as well as staff will be completing the following in the new year. So as Josh mentioned earlier, we're gonna create a condensed document of all our bylaws. So basically a Coles notes of the, you know, need to know basics that apply to S T R guests to make it easier for them to review it and sign off on that renters code of conduct. Staff will allow light rental hosts to move into regular hosts by paying the difference of the amounts, just in that way they're compliant. Staff will review all current documentation to streamline the application process on our website and and available staff time. And now we're ready for your questions if you have any.
Thank you very much. I know I have a few comments, but I'll turn it over to council first and see who wants to talk. Councilor Fredco, I see you're physically.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of questions and comments, if that's okay. The numbers are down compared to what you expected. In your presentation or the slides, a hundred and forty seven. I think hosts and I think the estimate was two hundred or I have to bring it back up again. And then the number of nights of stays was also significantly less. Is this, in your opinion, because of short term rentals are less popular in twenty twenty four than they were previous years? Or is it because of the program weaning out people, having them reconsider regging up the property?
So through your chair, I think it's a bit of both. What I've heard from the the host or the people who have connected with us through this summer is that they aren't seeing the rentals that they were seeing when this all kind of blew up in, you know, covid times. Some of those people had never rented before and they saw an opportunity and they took it. I think the registration bylaw that is that bit of legwork that some people just think, ah, well, I only get rented a week. I'm not gonna bother. I've heard that quite a bit. But the other side of it is that they, yeah, there's just not as many rentals as it was. So I would say it's a combination of both from my perspective anyway.
Okay, and then you also have fewer complaints, I think, than you expected as well to do with short term rentals. So had you ramped up bylaw enforcement staff in the summer to help cover complaints regarding short term rentals or was that sort of just always factored in with your staffing levels for the the summer season?
So I don't know if Tony wants to jump on that, but we did have the same number of students. We had two students and then we've gone to three full time officers. And that was, I think, a combination of short term rentals, the implementation of this bylaw as well as the amps process, because there's quite a bit of what's the word I'm looking for? Logistics administration, thank you, yes, with both of them. So yeah, it's it's more of that. So then the complaints weren't as weren't as high for sure.
I'm assuming there was more administration than what you expected.
Yes, yeah.
And I mean, I know the building department has done a lot of work reviewing people's applications for septic and building permits. But couldn't we just allocate part of the existing fee for time and effort in the building department rather than having a separate fee? I know our residents are getting heated, but that's just a suggestion.
Yeah, for sure. And the only thing that I would say in response to that, because we did think that through as well, is that when we had our strat corp review, we were on par, if not a little lower, especially with our light rental host, because it's the same amount of work for us and for building with red light versus heavy, you know, regular rental hosts, because they do do it less, it costs them less, but it's still the same amount of work for us. So I would say that 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 we are fees are pretty on par, if not a bit lower. So I wouldn't want to take any more of that away to cover the cost that we already incur for the staff time that it takes us to go through this process.
Okay, thank you. And then one comment with the mayor's indulgence. There were a number of people in council, members of the public at council yesterday, and I had an opportunity to talk to them. And their feedback, they they live on a street that has historically had a couple of short term rental properties that have been problematic from their perspective because they're overcrowded and too much parking and all the things that we had worried about. And they had said that this year there weren't any problems.
Great.
So they don't, they they partially attribute it to bylaw and the the host having to comply with number of guests and bedrooms and everything. So just let you know, there's
Yeah.
People have appreciate the bylaw, even if the host maybe think the residents do.
Yeah, I appreciate that feedback. That was something we expected with that question. We knew it and we knew the respondents, so we kind of knew that was gonna come forward. But it's good to hear that it is making a difference. We feel, I know the street you're, you know, referring to, there were some problem Airbnb's that even before I went on Matt leave, I was aware of them. So as we went through this process, we were finding issues that, you know, the the neighbors do know, they know what goes on. We we'd seen found those issues and identified them and rectified them, which is which is great news too. So I appreciate the feedback.
Great, thank you.
Chief Undom, did you want to make a remark or has it been covered?
Just gonna make one correction. We used to have three students that we would hire for the summer. We last year only had the two to help offset some of those costs for the full time.
Thank you. Counselor Hazelton. My thank you. Great report. Thank you so much for following through and getting this S T R thing off the ground. I'll go a little bit of what counselor Fredco said. I I have two properties in Honey Harbor that were serious problems. And I've had the neighbors of those properties call me up and say, thank you so much for supporting the short term rental bylaw. These properties are no longer a problem. And one of them was such a problem that I know you had had to be on site at that property a couple of years ago. So kudos to you for that following through on establishing this. It's anyways, it's very, very positive. The, I do have a question. You talk about the the two hour response time. So when you, when you talk about a response, what could you describe what a response is?
So through in the through your chair, the in the short term rental bylaw, the responsible person has to respond within sixty minutes of a bylaw violation or emergency situation. So upon request, they have to have that person available to us when they have renters in that property. Right now, that is the one hour. That's what we're asking for the two hours. That response would be anything to, we have a short term rental hotline that's available to anyone in the public to call. So if let's say there was a rowdy party, they can call that hotline. They call the responsible person or send them a message saying, you know, you have this issues going on. How are you going to address it? They go back and forth until it's resolved. So that's where we need that person to be available to us or to the hotline, however that looks, to, you know, address those problems right away so that those neighbors don't have to put up with it all night and call the O P P and do those things. So I hope that answers your question.
So this hotline is twenty four hour?
Yep.
Awesome. And the one hour response is to be on site to deal with it?
That's what we've asked the responsible people to do, yes, to address those issues, because there's some, you know, if those renters aren't picking up the phone and they won't stop whatever they're doing, then you need to physically be there. You're responsible. That host is responsible for those people at their house. So that's what we've asked as we go through this year, but that's where we're looking for that two hour, because that gives the people the time to get here, to get in a boat, however that looks like for them and where those cottages are located.
So as just as a data point, I live in Newmarket. It takes me an hour and fifteen minutes to drive from my driveway to the marina. By the time I get out of my car, get in a boat, you know, I have to bank on a minimum two hours and that's from Newmarket.
Yeah.
Not too many people live that far north of Toronto, so a two hour window, I think, is is not enough. My preference would be to, and I don't know if you've thought about this or considered it, but considering a a live voice or video interaction with the responsible party with an understanding of what needs to be done and then some follow up action that could could result in the correction that needs to take place. And I'm not trying to give people an out, but I I don't want to go to two because that next year we're gonna be be going to three because nobody from Toronto is gonna be able to get out of Toronto and be on a water based property in Honey Harbor within three hours. So it's we're in dealing with problematic things and I think we need to have an almost instant establishment of of contact, live phone video or whatever to begin the dealing of the problem. What are your thoughts on that?
Tony, do you have comments if you want me to go?
Through your worship, I just want to caution council, this is not just for complaints about the short term rentals. This is for emergency access to properties as well. So for example, if we have a fire alarm activation at a property, we need that property owner to be arriving there to reset that fire alarm. We don't reset that fire alarm as the fire department. That needs to be done by the property owner for liability sake. So we don't want to be sitting with a fire truck tied up for three hours waiting for an individual to come. So that's all part of it. We're trying to, with the two hours, we're we're listening to what our residents are saying about this and we're we're doing a compromise. I don't want it going to a three hour and won't agree to a three hour from my perspective for an emergency situation.
So I I hear you. I I'm not trying to disagree with the the intent of what you're trying to get at. I think you, I I think there needs to be. If I'm doing, if it's an emergency services thing, if it's a rental or whatever, if I can't get there within two hours, I need to have somebody physically local here that I could contact. And I know in the past where I can't get to my cottage, I'll call up our, you know, our our local taxi guy and go, can you go to my place and deal with it? So, you know, these are things that have to be resolved. And I'm not in favor of going to two hours because quite quite bluntly, there's an enormous number of people that come up to cottage country from, you know, Kitchener Waterloo and Guelph and Oshawa and those areas. There is no way in hell they're even gonna get gonna get there in three hours, let alone two hours. So.
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit.
If there's an alternate, I'd say stick with a one hour and keep the alternate.
So so that's a a piece that council is, as you've seen from the survey, that they were requesting it that it be prolonged. We've brought that to council. Council has that to say yay or no with it. Staff has looked at it and is recommending the two hours to to try to listen to some of their concerns going forward. Keeping in mind that once our hotline gets that, they're in contact with that individual. And if the person can say, I just got a noise complaint, you guys better be shut down. I'm on my way. We're done because that property owner has dealt with that situation within within that hour. They have met that that goal, right? So and that's what our, when we get the complaint, we want to try to have it rectified for our complainant within an hour.
Agreed.
However, we also know now that that individual is going to take a longer than an hour to drive up, but he's already dealt with it. And that's what, that's what our ultimate goal is.
Yep. Well, I mean, just as a data point, I know where Counselor Jarvis went, but I'll Counselor Jarvis resides frequently in Collingwood. I'll bet you, you couldn't get from Collingwood to Honey Harbor in a boat to the far side of Bosley Island or a little Bosley Island in two hours. I think we should stick with a one hour with the with a consult or a or some sort of active communication that is going to deal with the problem within a reason. I think we should stick with a one hour with the with a consult or a or some sort of active communication that is going to deal with the problem within a reasonable time for you. And if they are required to have a a local, you know, delegate, then fine, let's keep that path.
So just want to add to what Tony was saying. Since this year it was the one hour criteria, and like you said, not many people can meet that. We have people who have alternates, so they have a responsible person that can meet that time now. Going to that two hours, like Tony said, they still, we still have that access to 24/7. They can still get after the people right away if there's an outstanding issue right away. It just allows them to come up in that time. It's what we've been asked. So we're just asking if that's that's up to councils today. But right now, as it's running, all the responsible people we have can meet that criteria. So they have a cottage friend that lives down the road, they have their cleaner, whatever that looks like. So they are meeting it now, and it's been successful. We haven't had to use them. So that's why we're asking for that little bit of rope to allow them to 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 deal with their issues themselves without involving other people. But obviously, that's up to committee's decision.
So my final comment is the 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 catch distance you're going to get for two hours is going to be useless, in my opinion. I think you stay with one hour and deal with it.
Councillor Bocheck, followed by councillor Cooper.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor, I think it's well known that I was never in favor of this from the beginning, because of before this all came into place, we had zero costs, we had zero liability, we the township had no involvement. Now I think we have a real liability issue here, and I'll tell you why. You do an inspection of one of these places and you basically certify it that it's safe to be rented out. Are you going to go back every year and you're going to check the fire alarm to see if the battery is good? Change of ownership can happen, all kinds of things can happen. I don't think we've really thought this out and really understand that by creating this policy and moving forward with it, we've put ourselves in a very liable place that we were never in before. Not only that, the costs associated with this. So I'm going to ask Josh, our bylaw officer, is there a plan to do an annual inspection? Septic bid could be failing. All these things that you have on your criteria list, if you don't follow up annually, I think we're going to be in a real bad spot. So please comment on that.
So through your chair, we don't do annual inspections. That was not something that council wanted when this bylaw was created. We have the documents that are required. So those that septic inspections, that means a septic inspection was by a qualified person or a record of pump out. So that person is on site, looking at that septic every three years. Then we have Cody who does the review upon the application. So we found these bugs that were working out of our system. So, you know, if that's that's your concern about the liability, we aren't physically on site. We asked to see whether smoke alarms and CO alarms and their fire extinguisher on each level, all per the bylaw, all the documentation has been there. I don't want to go too far off track, because this is really just an update for the year to let you know and to ask about those discussion items. I think the bylaw has been very successful, and we've got, you know, great compliance, and our hosts are being really great working with us. And we just want to continue on the path that we are on and and make these edits if necessary and and carry on this way.
Thank you for your comments.
I I think it's important to understand that we have a registration system, not a licensing system, and that's one of the reasons we did that. Chief Undom and then councillor Cooper.
I keep this short. Council, a number of municipalities now have contacted us because they can't believe the numbers that we are that we have been successful in catching septic problems and all of that stuff. We've had a number of municipalities come and go through our program. So I'm very proud of our staff in in the program that they've created. Is it 100%? No, and that's why we've come forward with this, get your feedback and give you the feedback from the public, and then it's up to council which way you want us to proceed and go from there. But I'm very, very happy with the success that we've had. One municipality has been doing it for a year and a half and is only at 4% registration.
Councillor Cooper.
Just wanted to sort of weigh in on the timing issue that was identified by councillor Hazelton. At an hour, when you're talking north of Honey Harbor. It's an additional hour. For me, it's maybe 35 minutes, 40 minutes, but there are others that are, and there aren't alternates, because nobody lives out there full time. So the alternates may or may not be available. I just wanted to clarify that for two thirds of the area that's out there, that's what the reality is. Thank you.
Councillor Jarvis.
Through your chair, yeah. So it started November 6th until November 15th, so just over probably close to a week and a half's time. We had submitted this report as part of our report deadline, which was November 22nd, which was the last day I checked, and there was no new responses after that. So we I checked to to make sure which that extended timeline, if there was any last minute. But no one was doing it late. And actually, out of the 27 responses, almost all of them came within the first, I think we had almost 15 to 16 within like the first almost five to six hours, like very quickly. So some people, and as you've probably seen through public meetings, some people are very passionate and want to speak to these matters, and and some are just going through the process because the bylaw is in place now. So. But it is something for the next year. We could definitely look at extending that to a month prior to a yearly report.
Even a full full couple of weeks, three weeks, I don't know, I'm not sure. But anyway, okay. Appreciate your response on that. Thanks.
A few comments. One is, I am, I think the program has been a great success. And there's a few reasons why I think it's been a great success. One is the septic systems and the other building code situations that you have caught by this. And I and I think that's extremely important for the safety of our residents, for the safety of our guests, for the safety and health of our the neighbors of these units. So that alone tells me this system was important. I hadn't even realized, and I was impressed, because I think today is the first time I realized the the taxes you collected on this, that this became a property tax collection service. And 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 good on you, because I mean, that's on average over $6,000 per property that were they were behind on their taxes, and now they paid. I think that's very positive. The the responsible person being on site in an hour. A, I'm very impressed that you didn't have to use that. That's that speaks well of most of our hosts. And quite frankly, I don't have a problem with it staying in an hour. Because I fully respect that some owners won't be able to get here in three hours or four hours or 12 hours for that matter. But then they should understand that they they are responsible for that property that they're renting out, and they better have somebody in the neighborhood on call. And and I'm I'm aware of a couple of people who clean short term rentals, and they're also the on calls, because they're in the neighborhood. They can get to these places in 15 minutes boat ride from from where they live. I I think so to me, I'm glad we have that, but I'm also more glad that you didn't have to use it, because I think that that means that that's a positive. The other thing, and and I don't know if I'm speaking for all of council, but I know for myself, I received a lot fewer complaints about short term rentals in 2024 than I did in 2023 or 2022. Interestingly enough, I I got complaints from I think three who are short term rental owners. And they vary from here to here when it came to, let me call it politeness. But that's fine. I one of them was extremely reasonable. One of them less so. And I found myself listening to their complaints and thinking, yeah, but we caught you, and I'm glad we did. Because, you know, what do we, what do you mean? I have to have my septic capable of this and that. And you just shake your head. I mean, I love the story that that someone told me about, there was one, one of your short term rental owners that didn't even know they had a septic. And I think that's the kind of thing that I'm so glad that this program did. So I I commend you. I think that this has achieved a lot of what we wanted to achieve. But here but here's my question. And it it's a follow up to what I believe councillor Predko raised, you know, asking why the stats went down. Any idea, any any guess as to how many short term rentals might, I'll call it underground? And the reason I say that is certainly aware of numerous people who rent their cottage out, not that they've ever advertised it, it's the word of mouth. And 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 they just sort of, e- even if they thought about advertising for a few weeks, they say, oh, no, we're not going to do that anymore. If I get word of mouth, like because my cottage is available in August, and if you want to come in, go ahead. I suspect that that's still going on to some degree, but if if nobody's complaining, I'm you know, I I'm not saying that I encourage that behavior, but I just wondered if you had any indication of that.
Through your chair, there's no way for us to know. But we do get complaints often about people are people checking in, you know, do they does that, is that a registered host, those kind of things? So even if they have gone underground, likely they will pop up, we will find them eventually to get them registered, and that's the goal is to make sure that they abide by the bylaws to make all of our lives a bit easier so they can go that way. So of course, with any bylaws, there's going to be that, you know, side of it, but we are working through those ones that we have on our list, and Granicus does troll the sites every five days, looking for new ones. And we found ourselves new ones on online and on social media and stuff as well. So we're always kind of watching to keep an eye on them. And and yet there's going to be that, but we'll we'll keep working on it, and and that's what we're here for, for sure.
The other comment I forgot to make that I wanted to make was, I'm impressed that roughly half the short term rentals that you registered took advantage of the sustainability program, because to me, that that reflects a community responsibility, an environmental, but also community responsibility. And 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 I think that is a very positive read on probably the majority of people who do short term rentals. We hear about the few that are a pain in the butt or who don't give a boot. But I think the majority of people who run short term rentals, whether it's for a couple of weeks or a couple of months, are responsible people. I think the great majority of the guests are responsible guests. So I I think that also speaks widely to it, widely to it. Councillor Bocheck.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I will say that one thing positive has come out of this. And that is out of the number of properties you've visited, the number of septic beds that failed. That's one good thing that came out of this. But using my simple math and simple percentages, put that over the entire township. And we have a real problem with septic's failing throughout the township, because I don't care what math you use. If that's the percentage of the ones that you checked, then we caught a big, big problem here. Thank you.
All right, I'm not seeing any other hands at this point. Oh, I am seeing a hand at this point.
Yes, through your chair. I guess I'll just introduce myself, because I'm not on the report. But Cody with the building department, through the chair to councillor Bocheck, I just want to confirm the building department completed a desktop review during these processes. So just want to be clear that we weren't actually out physically inspecting the septic systems. A lot of the results of the numbers you see here in terms of failing septic systems were a result of the bylaw requiring either an inspection or a pump out that brought those issues forward. So I just want to make it clear that the building department is not out physically inspecting septic systems or on earlier comments, inspecting fire alarms and and building code, you know, related issues, we're completing a desktop review. So I just wanted to clarify.
But you did do a significant portion of septic inspections, just a routine long before SDRs.
That is correct, a different program, nothing to do with the short term rental aspect. But yes, we we are out there doing a number of septic inspections, just a part of a different process and different legislative avenue, if that makes sense.
System which has been very nicely upgraded, but thorough, more thorough database. Councillor Cooper.
Just briefly, I would ask that we maybe put a different name on those that aren't trapped by our system yet. We could, we're calling it, you know, underground or whatever the term was, flying under the radar. But there are people that have been renting their cottages for years, and they are not online, and they probably will continue. And I think we should not think them, think of them as being other than unregulated as opposed to underground, I think the term was. So I just wanted to clarify that, that our community members that do rent out for two weeks here or a couple of weeks there, they're going to continue to do that. And, you know, I they obviously have to be from building inspection and septic inspection, that kind of thing. I think it's just important to note that they're not doing anything nefarious. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, maybe maybe underground wasn't the ideal world word. Under the radar?
Yeah.
Unregulated? Yeah. All right. You you've heard different reactions to the one hour deadline. What was the other item somewhere here? Oh, sleeping cabins. I didn't hear any response to sleeping cabins from our council. I don't know if you want any guidance.
But I've I've heard that request from short term renters.
Yeah.
They would like to be able to include that.
And I think too, there's something I heard from hosts as well, the hosts that are on the bordering other townships, like Severn doesn't have a bylaw yet, so they are allowed. So it's hard for them to compete against Severn when we have them limited. So that's just another piece of the puzzle there. That's something I think that's a positive thing. It'll help the renters hosts feel that we've listened to them and we're we're taking their feedback. So if we can get, you know, the direction on that, if the one hour is staying and we're good for sleeping cabins, then we can draft those edits for February of 2025.
I think I think I'm I'm seeing more or less head nods on that one. That that sleeping cabin can be added to the count of bedrooms, I guess, in effect. Yeah, okay. Anything else? No. Well, then I have, moved by councillor Cooper, second by councillor Bocheck. Be it resolved, the committee of the whole accept this report for information purposes, and that the committee of the whole recommend to council direct staff to bring forward an amendment to the short term rental bylaw in February 2025 to outline the changes as discussed. All those in favor? And I got, I got enough hands here to say that is carried. Okay. We got one topic to go. But what I'm going to do at this point is do two things. One is I'm going to have moved by councillor Predko, second by councillor Jarvis. And and that is, be it resolved that the committee of the whole does hereby extend past 4:30, but no later than 6:00 in case we get into a hefty conversation. All those in favor? I got two, I got two votes, so that so we have to be done by 4:30 then. With your mic on, yes.
Can I suggest, I would say that today has been a a very long day already, and this is an important topic. We shouldn't be embarking on it in a burnt out state. We should call a special meeting soon to be able to dive into this topic.
I have no problem with postponing this item to a future date. I'm not sure we should do that before Christmas, given people's schedules, but maybe in January, we can zoom. We can look at the schedules.
Or or early January.
Yeah.
Not the middle. I'm gone. Okay, I could do it December. I could do Boxing Day.
All right.
Not going to Atlanta this year, so I got Boxing Day open.
So given the, given the fact that the old guys around the table are having trouble staying awake. I know, I'm one of them. Okay, we're doing it for staff. So, Madam Clerk, is there something else I have to read? All right. Moved by councillor Shoveler. Okay, moved by councillor Bocheck, seconded by councillor Hazelton. Be it resolved, the committee of hold does now adjourn at 4:04 PM to reconvene on February 4th, 2025, or at the call of the chair. All those in favor? And that is, oh, there's a slow hand there. That is carried. We are adjourned, and thank you very much for the slice.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Yeah, same way.
Oh, you came back Friday, right?
Happy holidays.